Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the last Post Falls City Council meeting of the year 2017. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Thorson, and she said she is running late, she will be here. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, a couple announcements. Cooten County Fire and Rescues Annual Candy Cane Run will be cruising through Post Falls tomorrow, December 6th, from 6 until 9 p.m. Santa and the crew will be handing out candy canes and also collecting cash, food, and toy donations for Toys for Tots, Christmas for All, and the Post Falls Food Bank. Visit our website, www.postfallsidaho.org, for a map of collection locations and Santa's route. There's still time to make a donation to Holidays and Heroes, which is being held on December 10th this year in Post Falls. This event is made possible entirely through our community's generous support and contribution. Cash donations and food items can be dropped off at the Post Falls Police Department. As more donations are provided, additional children can be added to the shopping list. The City of Post Falls is hosting a public open house meeting to discuss parking and street configuration in our city center area this Thursday, December 7th, from 6 until 7:30 p.m. here at City Hall. The intent of the meeting is to introduce you to the planning project and get your feedback on specific elements. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. St. Vincent de Paul, North Idaho, is hosting a Christmas lunch on Friday, December 22nd, from 11 until 1 p.m. for anyone needing a Christmas meal. Enjoy a holiday lunch that includes sliced turkey, sliced ham, mashed potatoes, gravy, vegetables, a hot roll, and pie. The lunch will be served at Father Bill's Kitchen, 1317 North First Street in Coeur d'Alene. The City Council meeting scheduled for December 19th has been canceled. The next regular scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, January 2nd. Welcome, Carrie.
Why, thank you.
At this point, Chin, Betty Ann has been on our City Council for eight years.
Eight years.
And this will be Betty Ann's last meeting. We appreciate the insight you've brought to us, the expertise you have lented to us folks, and as a result, we wanted to provide you with-
Thank you.
-some flowers, which I did not grow. A certificate thanking you, and a card. So Betty Ann, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Just for the record, I see Steve Anthony in the audience, and he will be sworn in in January, and you are not getting flowers. Don't expect them.
I have mine.
That's right. Thank you very much, Betty Ann. Council, next item up is, I am requesting that you confirm the appointment of James Stephenson to fill a vacancy created on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The vacancy was created when Dr. Warren Kane had to step aside.
So moved.
That a motion and a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the November 21st, 2017, City Council meeting. Item B is payables, November 14th through November 27th, 2017. Item C is request for proposal for 310 North Spokane Street. And item D is contract with Idaho Fence for Sportsman's Park fencing. Item E is request to dispose of two computer items by the IT department. Item F is master development agreements for the Meadow Grove preliminary planned unit development and subdivision file number S-17-09 slash P-17-03. Item G is grant of right-of-way and grant of easement for the Hope Avenue Vacation and Dedication File, VAC-17-03.
Any questions? Not an entertaining motion.
So moved for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Aye.
They called you first?
I was late, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought she called you first. I apologize.
You already had.
She does that to me, you know, she switches the order just to confuse me. Sorry, Carrie. Next item up is, public hearings tonight, we do have one. It's on the International Building Code, and if anyone wishes to address the council, there are forms in the back, you could sign your name and present them to our city clerk, and we will allow you to testify. And with that, I will open public hearing. Justin, you up?
So Justin and I are going to tag-team this a bit. This is a bit of a collaborative effort going through a code adoption cycle. This is the first one I've done in Post Falls. I've done, thinking today, about four or five code adoption cycles, and I frankly dread this every few years because it's convoluted and difficult to explain what you're up to. The bottom line is, the codes in Post Falls aren't changing a ton. We're essentially adopting the code, the 2015 building code. We're adopting the amendments made to the code at the state level, as we're required to do, and then we're continuing on historic amendments to the code that have been in existence in Post Falls for a number of years. That's the gist of what we're doing. How we get there is a convoluted track. So, we put together a bit of a presentation, and I will apologize in advance, this is a lot of in-the-weed stuff. If at any point you think we're getting too far into the weeds, give us a timeout, we can speed up the process a bit and move forward. I do want to give you a bit of a background on how the codes are created. The International Code Council spends years coming up with these codes. It's a collaborative effort of people across the country, people in the trades, people who do code enforcement for a living. Once they get done, if the codes, we have copies of, I think, the building code and maybe a couple others here, there are thousands of pages long. Once they get done with those, they send them off and they put them out for adoption. In Idaho, the State Building Code Board takes that and takes a look at it and goes through hearing process, a rulemaking process, and comes up with a list of Idaho-specific amendments to that code. Justin's going to hand you quickly, for perusal, what the state did with the building code. It's a list of, delete this exception, add this section, and so they've gone through a pretty good scrub at the state level. They then turn around and give it to the local jurisdictions, and if the local jurisdictions want to have a building code, by January 1st of the year following the state's adoption, we have to adopt what the state has adopted. So that's the process that we're in, we're setting up a system so that come January 1st, we're still in compliance with the state code, and we can continue enforcing the building code. So with that background, what we're proposing to do is, we're proposing to adopt the 2015 International Building Code, existing building code, and then, for commercial construction only, the 2015 Energy Conservation Code. The State Building Code Board elected to stay with the 2012 Residential Code, which forces a bit of a bifurcation. So now we have to take just the energy, the energy code portions that are commercial, we adopt 2015, and energy code provisions that are residential, we stay with 2012. As I mentioned earlier, we're also adopting the state amendments and continuing local amendments that have been in place for some time. Go to the next one for us, Justin. We're also recodifying, because we're doing a bit of housekeeping while we're at it, we're recodifying the 2012 Residential Code, Fuel-Gas Code, Mechanical Code, and then those residential portions of the Energy Conservation Code. We're also reorganizing the Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Property Maintenance, and Excavation and Grading Codes. We have some, our code was a bit disorganized, you couldn't follow it and get through it and find everything, it wasn't in chronological order, so we tried to clean it up while we're going at it, hopefully making the next adoption cycle a little bit easier. Most of this, almost exclusively, is done without changes. There's some minor amendments for housekeeping, but there's really no amendments, minus, there is one or two minor amendments in the plumbing code that we'll talk to when we get to that point. So what is the goal of all of this? Number one, as I mentioned, is to comply with state law. State law requires that by January 1st, we have adopted the Building Code, Energy Conservation Code, and Residential Code as adopted by the state. If you don't adopt them, the way I read the state code, you're out of the building business. You're not issuing permits, you're not doing inspections, you're just done, at that point. So if we want to continue to issue building permits, we have to adopt the new codes. Yes?
I'm really not sure what I'm supposed to be doing with this, and unless I was a code enforcement officer, I wouldn't even know what it is. So do I just pass it down?
Yeah, it's just there for background, to see that, so you can see what the state has adopted.
There's a bunch of numbers and charts, yeah.
We're hoping you would interpret it for us.
And part of what we've done, is you look at our ordinance, we follow the same format that the state follows, they essentially call out the section, then they call out the amendment. It's really confusing when you just read it standing on its own, but it makes it nice because you can sit down with the code volume and what the IDAP is, or what the state, what our ordinance does, and you can sort of go through them, and with a cross-reference, figure out what's going on. So getting back to, part of this was cleaning up our code, making sure that we're not repeating things multiple times, which we have currently. We have administrative provisions that are repeated five or six times, which creates a trap when you want to make a change, and you only catch two of those provisions and leave two of them the way they used to be, you're building in a chance for conflict in future codes. So we've cleaned up some of that. We also wanted to ensure that we kept some consistency with what our codes have been, but also consistency as a region. We wanted to, to the extent possible, be on the same page with the other jurisdictions so that the builders who are doing business in this area only have one set of rules to work with. So what you see tonight is largely consistent with Coeur d'Alene. We work hard to try to make that broader. The county's obviously going in a bit of a different direction right now, so that's not going to happen this time, but generically, we work to make sure that the codes that we adopt are consistent as much as possible regionally, to make it something that the builders can work with. So diving into the International Building Code changes, what we've got for you is a list of the local-level amendments that were in our existing code, and what we've done with them. So starting with the first one, we had a local amendment to Section 10144. We're deleting that because it was adopted in error, it was something that we didn't need to do in the last adoption cycle. The next two amendments, we're not making any changes, those amendments continue on without changes. You'll note the little star there, some of the times when the code gets updated from 12 to 15, the reference changes. So the numbers might change, but the meat stays the same, we just have to change the reference so we're referring to the right code. We still continue to exempt agricultural buildings, that's required by state law. Let's see, we've updated some of our submittal requirements, this is more recognizing the change in how business is done. Instead of requiring that an application come in with three or more paper copies, we're going to one paper copy and one PDF. I mean, part of this is just keeping up with the times. The snow loads remain the same, that's been in place for some time, frost depths remain the same. In Section 40634, we've clarified some of the intent, we've took some of Coeur d'Alene's language, again, they reference each other, the same requirements, but it's more, there's a little more clarity about what the intent of the requirement is. Again, same, there's, we have, one of these have now moved to a new section in our amendments, the amendment remains the same, but it's moved to a new location. As far as foundation reinforcements, this has been in place for some time, Justin can correct me on this one. It's, under the code, there's no requirement for rebar, is, and I'll let you-
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Justin Miller, City Post Falls Building Official. Yes, we've had for, I've been here since 2005, and the rebar has been here since the early 90s, so it really hasn't changed much. It is, rebar's in the foundation, obviously, to help foundation walls from moving, if you don't get the air concrete mixture correctly, it can create pockets inside, and if we, our requirement is to have two verticals, 48 inches on center, which helps the wall stay on top of the foundation from sliding off of the foundation.
Want you to speak to the next one, Jason, that's the new firewall, one-hour firewall, rather than half-hour firewall.
This is a one-hour firewall, it's intended for multifamily uses, for their corridor to increase the protection for occupants to get out of the building, have enough time to safely get out of the building through the corridor. It's already the industry standard, nobody uses a half-hour rated wall, they use a one-hour wall to begin with.
If at any point you have any question, you think we're going too much detail, not enough detail, let us know, we can change this on the fly. In the Residential Code, we've, again, we're staying with the 2012 codes, the base code isn't changing, we've moved some things around to reflect a reorganization so that our sections come in chronological order now, so you don't have to flip back and forward in the code, so we've tried to catch all of those sections and put them in number order. So the first local adopted section has moved from Section 1 to Section 20 to put it in order. Section 103.2 and 103.3, those are now Sections 2 and 3.
Quick question, we see chronological, chronological, chronological order, do you mean the event, in the order in which the events would happen while building something, or do you mean the order in which these laws were added?
In the code, you'll have Section 4302.1.7, and then you'll have 40302.1.8, so there's a numerical order through the code. And the way our previous adoption was, it would do something in Section 4, then it'd do something in Section 7, then it might do something in Section 3, and doing the amendments. What we've tried to do is change that around so that as you're looking, reading our code, you'll start with Section 1, you'll do all the amendments in Section 1, then you go to Section 2, so that as you're trying to read it and compare it and make sure that you're understanding what we've done, you can sit down with the code book beside it and start at the front and work through the manual without having to flip back and forth.
Chronological to the IBC code.
Yeah, to the code sections, to the code numbering. So again, snow loads remain the same, but that's now Section 8, frost depth remains the same, now Section 15. Table 4, R302.6 has been removed, but it's, we'd have text that now addresses that, that's contained in Sections 11 and 12. Again, those sections just move location. We do have a new amendment, Section, in Section 1, it's R101.2, and that's clarifying the occupancy. I'm like, Justin, anytime I get into the technical stuff, I stop, because I'm out of my depth immediately.
This clarifies, this goes along with Coeur d'Alene, too, it just clarifies single-family residents as R3, and then it garages shops, accessory buildings is a U for utility, right out of the, it comes right out of the building code.
We've removed a number of elements of the Residential Code that are contained in our existing floodplain ordinance. I get concerned when we have two ordinances addressing the same thing, for fear that you may have some inconsistency built in. So because it's already covered in the floodplain ordinance, we've taken those elements out of our Residential Code, so we don't have that risk of conflict. Our submittal requirements have changed in the Residential Code, that mirrors what we talked about in the Building Code, and that's keeping up with the times and what we want to see in a submittal. Moving on to the next one, Section 9, there's some clarifications of firewalls, those are driven by state codes, we're making changes consistent with what the state has told us we have to do. Same with Section 12, which is Section 3207 of the Residential Code, it requires firewalls under stairs, that's, it's to be consistent with Coeur d'Alene, but it's also driven by state code. As part of this, and Justin can speak to this way better than I can, the state, a number of years ago, elected to not require sprinklers in single-family residential construction, and the Residential Code is driven, or has that built into it, so when you take that out, you have to put back in higher fire rating for the walls, and so much of this is adding back in increased fire rating for the walls, because the sprinkler requirement has come out, and that's what's happening with Section 8.
So, in the International Residential Code, right now, every single-family home is required to have a sprinkler system. State of Idaho elected to amend the sprinkler system out. When ICC did the code, they amended out all the firewall requirements and any life safety egressing requirements with the sprinkler system, and then the state amended it out, but they didn't fix the firewall portions, they left that up to the local jurisdictions to do whatever they thought was prevalent. Just as a tidbit, in, like, our firewall between our house, garage separation, in the last 10 years, I talked to Gerald Archer today, we think that there's 13 to 15 homes that save from total loss.
Go ahead and go to the next slide. So, moving into the other ICC codes, as I referenced earlier, in the Energy Conservation Code, none of our local amendments are changing, we're just going to the 15 for commercial, staying at 2012 for residential, because that's what the state has mandated that we do. Fuel-gas, we have some formatting changes, no other technical or substantive changes, it's just formatting. Same with the Mechanical Code. Existing building, we're not changing any of our locally adopted provisions, we're just going to the 2015 code, as required by the state. That's the other ICC codes. As I mentioned, we're also relocating the Electrical Code, the Plumbing Code, some of our other standard codes, so that they're more consistent and you can find them better in our code. There are no substantive changes, with the exception of that one bit in the plumbing code that we'll talk about. So here's what our Electrical Code was before, the wording remains the same as we go into the new code, you know, flip the slide, the only thing that's changed is we've moved the administrative provisions to a standalone administrative provision that deals with all of our uniform codes. Moving on to the next one, plumbing, as I mentioned, we have a couple of changes here. It's hard to see up there.
It's on the next slide.
Is it on the next, so this is the current one, on the next, on Items 4 and 5, they're bolded. We're reinstating a couple of tests that the Idaho state took out of the plumbing code, we're putting those tests back in. One is making sure that the shower pan is tested to make sure it doesn't leak. Thought that that might be a good idea when someone's buying a home, to know that their shower pan isn't leaking. And the second one, I'm going to let Justin talk about, I'm not even sure what that one is.
The second one is freeze-resistant yard hydrant backflow. So if you have a, one of those spigot-style lever handle spigots, if you hook the hose to it, and let's say you're filling up your swimming pool, and you got it all the way full, you turn it off, fire department comes in, hooks to the hydrant to put out a fire down the road, it'll create a negative pressure and suck the water out of the pool back into our system, if we don't have a backflow preventer there.
So those are the changes to the plumbing code, like I said, just a couple of nominal changes there. Moving forward into the excavation and grading, it remains identical to what we had adopted, minus moving some of the administrative provisions, as I mentioned with the other ones. That's the resulting code, it's just in a new location, that's the only change there. Property maintenance code, it was way too big to try to put on a slide and walk you through it, but nothing changes, it's just moving location. And that's the gist of what we're up to, happy to answer any questions.
Question for you.
Certainly.
You make it look fairly simple and straightforward. Now, without getting into too much detail, obviously, the county's opted not to adopt. By not adopting the changes, does that not create potential problems for us in the future as we move, as we-
Yeah, I've looked at that a little bit today, I don't want to really speak so much to what they did, but I can tell you what my advice to you would be. I would be concerned about whether you would have any authority after January 1st to do anything other than wrap up, you know, open permits. Because the way the statute is written, and I can read it to you here, I'll skip around because there's lots of stuff here, but it says, "Local governments enforcing building codes shall do so only in compliance with the provisions of this section." Jumping down a little bit, "Local governments that issue building permits and perform code enforcement, building code enforcement activities shall, by ordinance effective January 1st, adopt the following codes." And it tells you the code you have to do.
Straightforward.
So essentially, what the code says is, if you're going to do building code stuff, you have to adopt these codes. If you haven't adopted them, and it gives you a drop-dead date, I don't, there's, I think, a decent argument that if it were us, that we would have idle building inspectors come January 1st.
Okay.
It's going to create some real interesting wrinkles for them to work through, I think.
Thank you. Questions learned at this point? Okay, so that would be the staff report, and the, now we would see if there's anybody wanting to testify, has anybody submitted?
We have none.
We have none? Do you want to change anything you said?
Uh, no.
Well, thanks, Justin. I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion deliberation.
Well, we have an ordinance to pass further down, I think, Mayor, so does anybody have anything to say?
I guess I'm disturbed by the changes and not being able to see how it read before, you know, I sent an email to the city about that, just being able to say, okay, well, this is the way it was, and this is the way it's going to be, and I like to be able to see that bridge between the two, but I think you guys have done a great job explaining all that tonight. I didn't think that was really in the packet so much, I mean, what we got in the packet was, here's the new, take it for what it is, and I'm like, well, I'd like to see the old. But again, I guess the biggest part of it is, is that we're really kind of stuck with adopting this or not.
Yeah, and I sympathize with your position, and frankly, I always struggle with these, or whenever we're doing large ordinance adoptions, because it becomes really difficult to do strikeouts and underlines and show you the changes, especially when you're adopting, you know, a code volume, and everything's done by reference, if you look at what the state did, it's Section X, change this word. And it becomes really difficult, because we have to trace that back through what we've done, back through what the state did, back to the uniform code, and to give you a strikeout and underline of everything, we're literally going to have to bring to you, all of you, a copy of, you know, the full book.
Is it safe to assume, though, that, maybe we shouldn't assume, but is it safe to say that if there were any significant changes, you would have highlighted those and brought them forward?
Yeah, and that was the whole point of this exercise, we wanted to make sure that you understood what we're up to, that this really is, when it comes to what the IBC has done and what the state has done, we're pretty well on the hook with those changes. You can make some local changes nominally, and the ones that we're doing, I think, as hopefully what you saw, is those are continuing what have been on the books for a number of years, with the exception of one or two changes that are really trying to keep up with the times.
Any comments, questions?
I'm good.
Okay, and we do have an ordinance coming forward at the end?
Yep.
Good, thank you, Warren, thanks, Justin. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If you care to address the council, come forward, give your name for the record, and we'll allow you five minutes to speak. Seeing none. New business tonight, we have none. Ordinances and resolutions, we do have two ordinances, first is the Hope Avenue Vacation Dedication.
Move to place the ordinance, Hope Avenue Vacation and Dedication File Number, VAC-17-03, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Ordnance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of Idaho, providing for the vacation of right-of-way in the southwest quarter of Section 30, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise Meridian, as described herein, providing for disposition of the vacated right-of-way, providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to approve the ordinance, Hope Avenue Vacation and Dedication File Number, VAC-17-03, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Carrie, I'm counting those now, counting on my finger to make sure I get all six. The next item up is the ordinance, 2015 Building Code Adoption.
Move to place the ordinance, 2015 Building Code Adoption, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cooten County, Idaho, repealing Chapters 15.04, 15.08, 15.10, 15.11, 15.16, 15.20, 15.48, and 15.52, and adopting a new chapter, 15.04, that adopts- adopts the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code for commercial construction, the 2015 International Existing Building Code is adopted by the State of Idaho with exceptions and amendments, and recodifies the previously adopted 2012 International Fuel Gas Code, 2012 International Mechanical Code, 2012 International Residential Code, 2012 International Energy Conservation Code for residential structures, the Idaho State Plumbing Code, National Electrical Code, 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, and Appendix Chapter thirty-three of the nineteen ninety-seven Uniform Building Code for excavation and grading, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date."
Move to approve the ordinance, 2015 Building Code Adoption, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Anderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item up, administrative staff reports, we have introductory information on City Center Parking Plan Project. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson, I'm city council, my original intent was to give a thirty-second overview of where we were, or where we are in the city center plan, and then provide an announcement before this Thursday's open house. I think Mayor Jacobson beat me to the punch on the second item, but we'll reiterate that again. So, as mayor and council are aware, the, we've, have hired a consultant to address parking within the city center area, it's primarily an effort for us to be proactive to address the parking needs, demands, and opportunities within the city center area as it becomes more urbanized and, and continues to grow. To date, we have formed a technical advisory committee, and has had one meeting of that technical advisory committee, just to begin some initial discussions on the overall project. We have staff, and our consultant has conducted field reviews of the city center area where the parking is, looking for opportunities and looking for things that we're gonna have to overcome, and how do we, how do we move forward, and actually establish a formal city center parking area. That would involve not only enhancing the on-street parking, but looking for opportunities for a possible parking lot somewhere in the city center area. So, so that's the work that's been done to date, we've scheduled an open house for this coming Thursday, December seventh, from six to seven-thirty, that open house will begin with a presentation by Welch Comer, our consultant on the project, and then we will move into the rotunda area for the public in general. So, as I said, the purpose was primarily to provide an announcement to mayor and council, and also to the viewing audience, that we are having this public open house this Thursday, six to seven-thirty, and so everybody that's interested, or would be affected, or wants to stay engaged through the project, we encourage them to come and attend, so, that was it, thank you.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it. Next item, mayor comments, the only thing I want to say is, we won't be meeting prior to Christmas, so I hope everyone has a safe and Merry Christmas, hopefully we'll see some snow just for the season atmosphere, but if we do get it, please drive carefully, I know we're not supposed to be getting it in the next week or so. Counsel comments?
Linda?
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Parks Department, the Winter Fest 2017 was absolutely fabulous, I've never seen that many people in the plaza, you guys just did an outstanding job, and I think we were all very, very proud of that event, and I think that the public really, really liked it, so I just wanted to thank you for that. Pass that along to your staff. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for filling in for me, Linda.
Yes.